Mm hmm.
He was rough.
Yeah, I hear him playing.
So you're just doing things.
And then he feels like we're in a vacuum.
Back school.
I was younger then.
You hear an echo.
We should get it straight.
You're right.
Do I know me why you ask?
Your boy outfits matching your hat tonight.
Right to you.
Is that on purpose? Are they playing tonight?
All right, Todd, can you hear us, buddy?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
It's his age. I thought maybe you were really an ace.
Used to be.
What Amelia team was playing? Oh, I thought you meant you.
All right.
I know the long.
At seven thirty, we'll get started. Everybody's here. Appreciate everybody showing up. I think we have some zoom tonight too later on. Certainly have a storm. It's your pleasure on the minutes, January twenty two. Month ago.
Make a motion approval.
Motion been made. Question? All in favor of motion, make a name by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. I do not know of any old business other than, um. Brady did tell me, you know, we had, he had the eighteen last month and the thing. The, didn't the attorney say, didn't know that was staying?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so the four items that were public hearings, uh, the planning commission meeting in January went for the board. The three re-zonings were approved by the board of supervisors. The ordinance amendment, uh, was deferred until the next meeting. The attorney, after reviewing the proposed language from the planning commission and comparing it with state code, uh, didn't feel like the age eighteen thing would be in line with state code. And so he advised that the board strike that. Um, and then the final provision about adding an avenue for someone to get a possible exception. There was some discussion over what that would look like or need to look like. And so the board has deferred it at this time until the attorney and staff work together and maybe clean that up a little bit.
I just want y'all to be aware of that.
Okay.
What was their argument? They thought that people under eighteen should be able to own the property?
Based on the state code language, it just says, it just defines the eligible family members. It doesn't say the age specifically, so the attorney wanted to stay in that line.
Okay.
Yep.
I just thought that it's happened to be on our own business. He'd mentioned to me, um, only other thing I have on the whole business is, uh, I have a solar farm, we'll talk to him next week. Solar project. Over my way. So just want to let y'all be aware of that.
Good, y'all need another one over there.
I was gonna say, I've heard rumors of several, but none have actually come over to us. Come up to us yet.
I don't like having a meeting and y'all not know about it.
Right.
That's, that's whatever. Uh, moving on to new business, uh, public hearing, special exemption permit, Mr. Orr.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Yep, so the first item this evening is a public hearing, so a special exception permit request from Gregory and Cherie Orr. It's for property located at tax map forty five dash sixteen. It is off of Sparks Lane, uh, which is off of Rock Castle Lane off of one fifty three. It's a zoned RP five, it's a little over forty acres. And they are hoping to put a detached dwelling unit on there for, um, I best, I guess it's Ms. Orr's mother, Mr. Orr's mother-in-law. Um, and so that's their request this evening. They're here in attendance, if you have any questions for them, feel free to ask. Other than that, from staff, it's a pretty straightforward, like we've had in the past year, we've had a few of these, I think, three of these come through.
Questions? I won't bring up.
Do we usually have a list of neighboring parcels?
And so, um, we, I contacted all the neighboring parcels. Um, I mean, sometimes the applicant, applicant can add on to the application their neighbors. But the list of neighboring parcels is for staff to send letters to in terms of legal notices. So we've notified everybody and I actually spoke with two of the neighboring property owners. I spoke with one in the subdivision to the north. And then I spoke with one that actually lives off of Sparks Lane, which is the only other property off of Sparks Lane that would, uh, technically be affected. Both of those had no complaints, palms, understood the request and were, uh, pretty much signifying approval with the phone call.
One question. Have they, have they given you any indication of what's going to happen to the dwelling if something happens to the mother?
At this time, they haven't.
Cause I know the last few we've done, that's been a requirement, is that it not remain?
It can't be, it's not supposed to be rental property or anything. And then my question, you know, my concern about that is if, if they didn't want to dispose of the dwelling, if she, something happened or she went to assisted living or whatever, then it's gonna probably go to rental property. With forty acres there, it's not that the land is not an issue, uh, why didn't they just cut out a lot around it and?
The Sparks Lane's a private road.
So.
It's tapped out.
Oh, yeah, it already got five residences.
Three, three lots.
Questions while we're in public here? Hearing now, open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak for or against?
Y'all will open and speak if you'd like.
To answer the question. Um, we play, I'll go on to one second. And I don't need the microphone. Apologize in advance. My name is Cherie Orr, I've never done this before, I'm very nervous.
We don't bite. It's all right. Don't worry.
This is my mother and I'm having to ask permission. We don't plan on selling it, we don't want to parcel it up. The house will stay in our family. We have four children, our hope is that we leave this as a legacy. So the dwelling that we put on there would stay there permanently, it'll be paid for, so there won't be a mortgage. The taxes would come to the county, so that would be the, sorry.
The home plans on staying in the family. We don't plan on getting rid of it, it's gonna stay on the property. My mother-in-law will be there, uh, but I, I don't know what else to say about that.
She, the purp, the purpose would be that so she didn't go to assisted living. My dad died suddenly and it was not something that we thought would happen. And she lives in a big hu, house and we are too far apart from her. Our hope was to come out here and have some peace and tranquility. Uh, we would have made all these plans ahead of time, that's why I'm nervous, because you know, our future is in your hands.
But you understand what our concerns too?
Absolutely.
We started doing this all over the county, did everybody, did the house out, did it all be rental property? And it's not the way it's designed to be done.
No, I understand that fully.
So, okay.
And I'm not a crybaby, I'm sorry. I'm just nervous, I don't stand for public and speak. So, and our hope is.
Question, Mr. Miss Orr?
I was curious where the house was gonna be.
There was, there's an existing space that has a septic and a well, it's already in place, there's an address seventy one thirty. We were gonna place the dwelling right in the same place where they had the, um, trailer previous.
There was something here before?
Yes, there was, yes, sir. There was an existing second dwelling there. There is, like I said, a septic's in place, the well's in place, they're all in functioning order. There is an address already, seventy one thirty Sparks Lane. And we were gonna place this on a foundation, a, a slab foundation, about eighteen hundred to two thousand square feet. Um, that resident would be paid for, so there wouldn't be a problem with us having to sell it off in the future. It would stay for our children and whatever they decided to do as collectively as a group, they, they, both homes would sell with the property.
Any more questions? Thank you, does anyone else like to speak? Kind of empty, empty face, James. Hearing now, closing public hearing. I think I had to be in Lexington this past weekend and in the paper there, they had the same thing, some ordinances to deal with the same thing.
Right.
And they were talking about how many people could live in the house. They were gonna put a stipulation.
Probably because they might be having issues, yeah.
But, uh, then the other thing I got thinking about is say, if one of them, if one of them passed, or any situation, if one of them happened to pass and they like to move into the smaller part, uh, trailer, how could they rent their house? See what I'm trying to say? In other words, they may have somebody in the, in the house, be close by in case they had problems, may not be family, I'm saying. Is that something we should be concerned about?
To be, to be honest, I don't really think there's an enforcement mechanism to stop that.
All right.
And I'll say that what, what had occurred is a few years back, there was a couple lots and a few years back, they were, they were merged.
Oh.
So the one seventy one thirty was on a lot.
Oh, so those.
Somebody.
So it's merged and then, you know, the ores bought it, but there, as they said, there's that existing equipment there, it's just now on a parcel. Yep, and so that's.
They didn't move, y'all didn't move the old trailer, was it?
Yep. So then when they came on, then they contacted me upon, and then this whole process, you know, started. Gotcha. Yep.
Any more comments, questions?
The, um, where the seventy one thirty, is that, is that where the dwelling is going? Is that on that tract of land?
So as I was sort of, as I was just saying, there was two parcels and they were merged into this one.
They merged into the forty acre.
And the bores, the ores bought the forty acre. It was about an acre and a half and then the remainder of that, and then they, they were merged a few years ago.
So you probably left all that here is correct.
The map here doesn't show that change.
So it runs kind of like.
That little.
Yep.
Okay.
How long ago did, did the dwelling, they gused and what on subject?
I would say, y'all know how many years? Several years.
Yeah. Seemed like to me it used to be its own parcel, you could apply just to have it again and be its own parcel. And that looked, there are a lot of things.
Um, but he said it's maxed out at the end.
Yeah, they can't.
Yeah, they could ask for a variance for that.
Well, yeah, they could.
But it says maxed out, but I know Vidal only allows so many houses on our street, on a, a private road. It did count houses, they don't count parcels.
We do. Our subdivision ordinance requires no more than three lots per easement. Since it's a private road, our subdivision ordinance considers it an easement.
Okay.
So that's like the same thing happened with, uh, what's the gentleman's name? Down there off of three sixty, you cross railroad tracks, I can't think of that road. It's a private road back, they came through a couple of years ago. He had to get a, uh, is it Buddy?
Royal, is it Royal Road, Royal or something?
I can't think, it's, if you're coming, uh, it's on your right, if you're going east, right off three sixty, you have to cross railroad tracks which are front. And then it's like a, it's like Pine Grove, maybe Pine, I can't think of the name of it.
They think about getting back Everdies or Church Road or something back there.
It's like you cross back and it's like, um, that ten lots or something. Well, the back lot was a large lot, but it's since it's a private road, they weren't eligible for a family cut. Look, if there was a way for them to get a lot, I'd rather them get a lot than bring them before you guys. Yep, yep, you know, there ain't, there is, uh, no halt there.
But, but only.
But that's the issue.
It just seems like we've been doing a lot of these lately and I think that's, will come back to bite us eventually, down, down the road, maybe.
But they could apply for a variance on the subdivision ordinance, right?
So they're technically, there's no, y- you can appeal the subdivision ordinance to the board of supervisors, but only, all, right now, the only provisions, the only provision for appeal would be the appeal of the determination of the subdivision agent based on the ordinance. See what I'm saying? It's not a variance, it's an appeal of the determination. You can do a zoning ordinance appeal to the board of zoning appeals, but the subdivision ordinance doesn't fall into, and the zoning ordinance are two different ordinances. You don't appeal the subdivision ordinance to the board of zoning appeals. So your only course of action for a variance with our code is through the zoning ordinance to the board of zoning appeals. But them appealing for a variance would not help them in this situation through the zoning ordinance, because it's not a zoning ordinance issue. Our subdivision ordinance doesn't allow them for more than three lots per private road. So this Sparks Lane is tapped out. So then therefore they need to go for the detached dwelling unit to get a house on there, since we only allow one house per parcel.
It's, feel like to me, this property kind of is outside of the normal subdivision intent. You know, they're not making a subdivision per se, but it is kind of, it, it used to be, it's in parcel.
I, I agree with what you're saying. I'm just telling you that there's no route in our ordinance for them to get there. Now that's exactly what discussion came up with the whole family divide thing, was the family divide discussion at the board of supervisors was, is there a route for someone to get an exception or what's commonly known as a variance? But there's not, and that's what the county attorney had confirmed is the only route in the subdivision ordinance is just an appeal of the agent's decision. So the board would have to review that appeal based on the ordinance, not based on whether they thought there was a circumstance. You guys understand what I'm saying?
How long ago was it merged together? You got any, any?
I'd say, I was, how long have y'all owned it? Just a few months, I'd say four or five years, I could pull that up. I could try to pull that up.
I guess my point is, before they merged it, there was already four lots back there.
Mm hmm. Oh, I agree. If you guys say, hey, I vote, give, we give Brady the authority and the board says, cut him a lot, I mean, I, you know what I mean? I'll do what the, the planning commission, the board say. I don't want him here any more than you guys do.
I'll be in failure of that. I've merged it.
All right, what would, what would be the acreage if it was unmerged?
Just, it's one and a half?
That would open it up to if the family wanted to rent it out, do whatever, if something happened to the mother, that would be pretty illegal, it'd be on, it's on a lot, you know, I mean.
Yeah, I don't really know if, yeah.
I mean, it'd be separate lot at that point.
The question is, can the board advise staff to administratively defect from the ordinance?
I understand. Well, you wanted this situation to come in front of the board, based on individual circumstance, right? But we got us an individual circumstance, right? Well, I see. If you want every one of them to come here, you might not be able to do this on the next one. But if you can do this on this one, help them, we wanted to come here where we had, you know, a finger on.
But which part? I think what Brady's saying is he, we, we as a board can't tell him, don't follow the ordinance that we have in place, do what you want to do. Like that doesn't, I don't know if that would be very legal of us to say.
I guess we could.
We can't, we're not gonna follow our own ordinance.
We could get a motion to approve with suggestions for the board to decide, not us. They got more clout than we do. You know, I'm, I'm just throwing that out. They could consider it.
Yeah.
I mean, it wouldn't be in the motion, but it'd be a consideration for them to, uh, if they would like. Since it's a, uh, each situation is separate.
So what you're saying is pass it on to the board supervisors with a recommendation, did they take that action?
Well, approve for this, what they want, but I guess take action.
Right.
Certainly look into it, but, cause I'm sure goes through and later if they change something, it goes through and the ores could always do it later. It's not like they have to do it right now, they could go ahead and put the house, kind of what I'm thinking.
Right.
Now, you think that's stupid, crazy? I mean.
Just my, my opinion. I think it, I think it needs to be right when it comes to the next level.
Okay, all right.
Because if it goes to us, then we've got a table possibly for thirty days to see if we.
To fix an ordinance or to figure out, yeah.
Whatever. But we're not just gonna give him the authority like, like.
Right.
Jennifer said, we're not gonna, we can't do it either.
Yeah.
We can, but we can't do it on the spot.
Yeah.
And then that would be my concern is dragging it out. I mean, obviously they want to do something pretty quick, because, you know, they had sudden passing, you know, so.
The zoning ordinance allows for detached dwelling units via special exception, which means as long as it's in there via special exception, they're gonna, requests are gonna come. And I think last year we had two or three. So, I mean, it's gonna keep coming. So if you guys don't want detached dwelling unit special exceptions coming, then, then we might need to, to close that door, you know what I mean? But you see what I'm saying? Cause so they're gonna keep coming.
I don't know that you can do that, though.
Right.
Stop it.
Cause there's, it's in there and it's, it's in all of our districts as a special exception provision.
Is that road paved?
No.
Is it even on the six-year plan?
No, sir. I think the only, we only had a couple on there last year.
The Rock Castle has been paved, I think at least partially, you know, like all the.
Yeah, I mean, you understand my concern, is it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and, and they're gonna put it on permanent foundation, they're gonna invest some money in it. It's, it's gonna be too nice of a place if it get, get, becomes vacant, not to do something with it. Honestly, you've got an investment there, you wanted nothing else, run it out to get a return on your investment. I mean, I would do it, I mean, everybody, anybody else would do it, too.
It used to exist as a parcel, it's not something, it was kind of almost a grandfather, but resigned.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess if it was already a house, sir, and they were gonna take the house down and fall on the grandfather clause.
Right, right.
But it doesn't have a house, sir, to take in, like.
Or if it had a mobile home, you were actually improving the situation with the.
Which it did, it just wasn't fair.
I'm sure there's a time limit on, you know, five or six years, probably doesn't qualify anymore, I'm sure.
Right.
Good comment.
This is a suggestion, and I'm not gonna make a motion, somebody else can put it. What if, what if the planning commission approved the special exception permit? And, and authorize and ask staff to look into the merging of a lot or unmerged, I guess what I'm saying.
Right.
By the time it gets to us. That way we don't delay it. Here, we don't delay it at all level, and we get that question answered.
All right.
Yeah, that makes sense. And then if it's not possible, then they can choose to approve it as it is.
Sounds good.
I'd like to make a motion.
A second.
He's taking minutes.
Reprover, uh, approval, but that staff, uh, look into the unmerging of the lot before it goes to the board of supervisors.
Everybody understand the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah. Any more comments?
Does that, that meets what everybody was kind of saying?
Yeah.
And you do have, you do have some, some, some interest there, there's already a well there and a septic there.
I mean.
Right.
It's already separated, it's not like a other penis, it's like other property, it's all one.
Not like they have to create all this stuff, it's already there.
The biggest issue is you, when you merge out a non-conforming lot, because it's a five acre minimum district.
Yeah.
So years ago, they merged away a one and a half acre lot. Then staff would have to approve, that's why it's something that I didn't feel comfortable, you know what I mean?
Right.
Without, because then I've had to approve the recreation of a one and a half acre lot.
Which is.
Which is three and a half acres less than the minimum acres required. Just because there historically was a lot. And you guys know how far that, you could go back and all the doors that could open up. You know, so there's a, as in every situation, it's not just a.
Their gut is.
It, it isn't.
Staff may have just answered the question that we would be waiting for.
Well, at least they can review it.
Yeah, but it's, it's great, yep, did look at.
Like which do you?
All right, you've heard the motion, no more comments, all in favor of the motion, I'll be passing on to board supervisors. Making numbers, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Come forward, board supervisors, the third Wednesday of next month. Now, do they have to have a public hearing on it?
Yes.
No.
You don't want to.
Only be there to answer any questions they may have.
Just like this.
There'll be other issues, but your issue.
You poke him and make him do it.
Thank you. You can stay in this.
And thinking you, it's not a, we have to look at the whole picture, so that's why we totally get it, trying to figure out which.
Uh, we draw a bit of crowd, yeah. We draw a bit of crowd.
I was gonna say, no other issues gonna be crowded.
Yeah, but most of them aren't concerned about that issue.
No, that's what I mean, they'll be there for something else. But, and that's where it gets hard, though, is cause like, the more and more come, at some point we have to start saying no, and then.
It's gonna be.
How do you, yeah.
We can cut it off. This gonna happen.
But, that's down there again.
This one.
Now. Oh, is, so this is revised, okay. This is revised with the two that we talked about, okay. Oh, then I guess I haven't seen this one type, I think. Oh, yeah, I see.
That's hot, it's beef, just wanna make sure y'all can.
Oh, I was like, what is that?
Here, so, uh, uh, any questions you have, I'll be, be happy to take those.
Brady hadn't started the discussion.
Okay.
We can hear you now.
Good, good.
All right, guys, so what you have here is, um, the future land use map perspective option, after a couple back and forth with the comp plan committee and the CRC. At the last meeting, we handed out just an option, which was basically, uh, show you the existing one, this is the existing future land use map. So the initial option that was handed out was really just an expansion of this map here. So it was the same relative focus of development on the eastern end of the county, but it had an expanded area for those development areas. The only real change was the addition of the industrial corridor all the way along Route three sixty. After the comp plan committee met, they reviewed a second option at that meeting, which showed a little bit more in line with what you see here before you, which was expanding more of the development area of west towards Jetersville and reducing it more on the eastern end. Um, and there was a lot of concern with the comp plan committee on having so much focus on the eastern end and having a lot of leakage going out of the county, uh, sales leakage, as was mentioned, uh, has occurred in the research that was put before us from the CRC in the demographics section. So basically, the term that would be used as a bedroom community, people that are maybe staying, living, but they're living right on that proximity of, of the end of the county, so then they'll do their shopping in Chesterfield. So the thought was if we expanded development maybe further down west in terms of opening it up further west, down three sixty, if people were to be that on the other side of the village, you know, more, would they stay in Amelia with their spending a little bit more so? So this, this is the, the option after those discussions that's just before you for general feedback and discussion. And what we're, what our goal here is, is to look at the current future land use map and look at how we could update it as is needed to reflect what Amelia would like over the future. Update it as is needed to reflect what Amelia would like over the future. Now, the final, what will happen here is once you all and the comp plan committee, of course, sort of leading it. Once the planning commission really feels comfortable with a map, this will go out in the survey material. For feedback from all the citizens, so that they can actually give us feedback on something that the planning commission feels is a viable route. Instead of shotguning out fifteen different options or whatever, or shotguning out nothing. So that's really what we're here today is to just get some feedback on this map, what you guys are thinking. Regarding the future land use over the next twenty-five, thirty years, how it compares to the existing map. And then we have Todd Fortune from the CRC who's done all the work here with the shape file and making this really nice and readable. I think it's a lot more clear, uh, than the prior ones. So I'm really thankful for that, but he's here to answer any questions.
Or if y'all just have questions, like how the heck did y'all come up with this? Um, you know, it's Larkin, me, Travis, Roy, Juan. Richard.
Did you see what we're trying to get at?
Yeah, there was, if y'all, y'all can't see option one and two, but like basically the yellow was like all up here and all green. And we kind of moved some of the green down here and took away all this yellow here to try to shift it. Towards the center more. And, and not have it all at that eastern.
We, we had a two hour discussion. And so we can't get into all the.
Yeah, I know.
But, I, 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 I did have a few copies, uh, which I passed around. From the demographics supplied us. That was the first thing that the Commonwealth, uh, Regional Council. Discuss was it demographics. And in that, it points out. And there's a chart and so forth here that. According, uh, to the twenty seventeen United States Economic Census. That, uh, that, that per capita spending totals, this is statewide, fourteen thousand, a hundred and eighty-five dollars per resident. Spending in Amelia County only totaled four thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars per resident person. While nearby Chesterfield County surpasses the state average at nineteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine per resident per year. The lower rates of consumer spending directly affect the county's tax base. Spending money earned by Amelia residents into the local coffers of Chesterfield. And other nearby jurisdictions. In order to plan for a secure and prosperous future. Amelia should be looking to return consumer spending to the county. By encouraging a variety of local business opportunities. Thus align residents to work and self-locally, contributing to the betterment of their own community. Well. If there, there are other reasons for the, uh. What we discussed really was a, kind of a economic hub. Being located, uh, close to the courthouse. But especially because the, the schools were actually fortunate. Uh, in that all our schools, the public and private are located in, in one area. And, uh. But so, uh, to emphasize that makes a lot of sense. Uh, it's, it's rather obvious with, you know, school buses cost and fuel and maintenance. But then if there, it, it also affects the, uh, the, the families. Uh, the parents further from the school, uh, child gets sick or any reason. So. Uh, having a more concentrated area. So that, that it separates it from neighboring Chesterfield. And Chesterfield, and Jennifer said she couldn't even remember. I didn't realize she was that old.
I'm not that old. I didn't mean all the way, but I remember when Cloverleaf was like the first thing I got to. That was like.
You would go in three sixty.
Yeah, nothing.
And you did not. Get a stoplight now to, to you hit Southside Plaza. That was the first stop. And, uh, so we know what it's like now. And, uh, we also know that it's on the drawing board for Polite to be extended. If Polite gets extended, they're just gonna. Blossom right out around that. And they'll be almost to us. Well. I don't, and most of the people in this county that have been here a while or a year. Like it here. And frankly, most of the people moving into the county are moving away from it. And just, and so I don't think we want to, uh, be encouraging. The suburban sprawl by going further east. But also having a, a, a central hub. Will bring in other, uh. Commercial in that area, which everyone would benefit from. And certainly the, the, the taxes that is, will, will be saved by, by not having to do as much busing. By sheriff's office not having to go as far to deliver subpoenas. But if you're putting, uh, uh, in, uh. But multi, multifamily houses and, and, uh, have an area of more dense, smaller lots. Then if it's, if it's, uh. In, in the center. Of the county, it will also draw in some even from the western. But if you, if it's further east, they're gonna continue going to fable and crew and our leakage. So we'll benefit, we would benefit, the leakage would be helped in both directions by doing that. There, there's, there's just such sound reasoning in my mind for. The, it isn't that we don't need growth. We need growth and we need balanced growth. Now, where the industry is located can be anywhere along the three sixty because of, uh. Uh, the corridor, uh, we don't want it right on it. We want it, you know, sit back. A little bit. We don't wanna turn three sixty into, to the street like Chesterfield has done. But, uh, and, and, but that, that's the main thing industry needs is to have the three sixty. To be a route for them to get things in and get things out. And so that is where they need to be. Uh, but the, the, uh, commercial retail and, and, and a, a larger center. In other words, Amelia would be, uh. When you look in the future, this, this is, this is, this is not looking at right now. This is looking at where, where do we want to go? This is planning. And, uh. So, uh. It, Amelia would become more of a destination. And goodness knows, uh. Amelia is, if one thing is big in is, as, as far as the kids and so forth concerned, and even adults. Is sports. There are a lot of, a lot of teams, a lot of, lot of, of activity going on. In gymnasiums and in the, 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 quite a number of ballparks and so forth. And to have that more complete, it's just, it's a win-win situation.
The only flaw with that theory is it, it's Walmart, Home Depot, Lowe's, some big company like that. They're not gonna build out on six oh nine or downhill on Dennisville Road, or they're gonna build on three sixty. They're not coming. That's the only drop out. They want that exposure off that main highway. That's the only flaw that, that.
Yeah, we didn't say they can't. They just have to step back a little bit.
I mean, yeah, we'll, we'll march off of three.
Walmart's off three sixty and Powhatan, sixty, sorry, off sixty and Powhatan. And it's not, well, bam, you know, it's, to me, that's a good bumper.
Park lot out front, so.
Yeah, but I mean, that goes along with what the language is in the comp plan.
He would, he's been commenting about it. It didn't want to clutter up three sixty like Chesterfield's done, but. If you want commercial business come, I don't think that's avoidable. You know, I'll tell you can avoid that.
Well, there's certain ones, but it, it, uh, to, to have access roads where you have multiple. Businesses is what is the preferred way for planners to, to, uh. Recommend. And we've had that in the past come to us. People.
Yes.
That have helped us with comprehensive planning, that he shows, you know, uh, how you do it. But Powhatan has, has, has done quite a few like that. There, there's, they have improved that. And of course, Powhatan, they, they, they let things get out of control. And, and the eastern Powhatan, and then they, they had to build several schools and the. Tax rate got almost double what Amelia's was. And now they've, they realized that now they're talking about trying to. Keep things more rural. And they're, they're, they've kind of, uh, uh, changed, they've changed their team. Some of them have realized that, that, uh, uh. That, that maybe, maybe they went, and it went overboard. And, but we're, we're, where we can still, uh. Where we can still help really all the residents of the county a lot. Because it will affect everybody through the tax base.
I think one of the biggest things we need to look at is it, it, how are we gonna improve our infrastructure to handle stuff like that? Chesterfield, I worked at Chesterfield twenty, thirty years down there and developers paid for it. I mean, there were, what project, we put in two and a half miles of eighteen inch truck sort and developer paid for it to be able to develop that piece of property. That was stipulation. And everybody in between hooked into it. And they got sewer bills, all those people. And all they had to do was tie into it. You know, I, I, we can't even get developers put in a sidewalk. You know, and, but that Chesterfield got a lot of their infrastructure paid for by the developers wanting to develop property. And we, we're, in our current economical situation, we cannot afford to put in infrastructure for people. For other people to come and develop. They need to be doing it themselves. And we're just gonna have to bear down on that and stick to that. That's my opinion.
Well, yeah.
We're looking at this, uh. Was it, uh, we just had CIP about two days before that, so. Uh, we're talking, you know, if you put more sewer in, where was the best place, you know, they would say, but it's kind of. The permit right now is on the eastern corner.
Like, wait out, yeah.
You know, if you could. Any way we could put it closer to where we are ahead. And develop that area a little bit more, or shoot it up three sixty the other way. But, uh, that was a comment that came up.
We didn't, yeah, we, we didn't necessarily develop this map around assuming that Smacks Creek is gonna happen. It's, if you guys know Smacks Creek, it's like down here, right? So we actually removed that yellow part. Even though that's kind of how the original was and pushed it that way.
Here's the existing sanitary district. Everything is outlined in black, sanitary district. These other areas are areas that have been considered in the past and had feasibility studies done, future expansion. This port right here is Cheaton Road coming down through here, Butler's Road here. This right here was where they had potentially that symbol there was potentially where they would have put the new. So. If they put the new facility, this shows that they would have had, had a ten inch force station. So basically pump this direction. I'm even telling you that in later term, I'm not there at all. The biggest issue with where they locate everything is all about your drainage basis and how the drainage is gonna flow. And not just your drainage. So you gotta consider your drainage basis, cause that's gonna dictate your amount of pump stations and force stations. Secondly, you have to consider the number of customers you can serve in that expanse area. And then weigh that equation by the amount of investment you're gonna have to put in to determine. How long or if ever you'll even break even on the investment. And so when B and B has done these feasibility studies, that's what they look at is the cost of the infrastructure. The number of potential residents served and the natural drainage basis where the water, the wastewater would actually flow. But this shows you our sanitary district and our potential expansive, uh, different areas of expansion. Of course, um, our current facilities up, up on this side, that's where.
Yep, you're right.
Yeah.
Facility was built in the sixties. It was upgraded in the nineties. It's operating at about thirty to forty percent capacity. The DEQ permit, the reason that we only, the reason, and this was talked about in the comp plan committee meeting. Once, if we ever build a new one, that one has to shut down is because it's technically grandfathered in. Due to its age in terms of its processes. So they won't, they won't allow. Once you op, open up a new one, they won't allow us to continue operating that old, old one. We would lose the grandfather. Provision to continue operating the old one. So we either have to basically build a new one. And then fully upgrade that old one to meet all modern standards to operate both of them, or what. They, everyone has basically suggested because the cost would just be build a new one and. Use the old one as a very large pump station, basically is what it would turn into. And the reason why is. Sixty, as you guys would know. You're gonna, a lot of times you're gonna be the kind of pump it up on one side or pump it up the other side, the natural weight of it. Like a little bit of a ridge. So it would serve as basically a huge pump station to pump everything up and over and then down. To the new facility.
Did you say the old one still has seventy or sixty percent left?
Tons of capacity. Now, we technically, again, because of its age. It's operating at thirty to forty percent of capacity. Capacity would be a million gallons a day. Daryl had told me, and we just talked about it today again, that. Right now, he doesn't think they can go over and I'll have to give him a certain amount, but probably in the three quarter million range. Even though that's not full capacity, he doesn't think we could exceed that.
It's like there's no safety after.
Right. That's his, so I don't really understand all that, what it means. And I could always have him come talk to you guys at a, you know, as we get further in this. But that's just one layer. Your future land use map, you have all these things you're considering. One layer is future utility expansion. So it, it does seem like the way the system is today and all the planning that's been done. Most of the expansion of the sanitary district area has been more this way towards Cheaton Road. And what also makes sense about this area, I guess, when all this is, uh, the big development you guys have talked to me about. You said came through, it was like five hundred, eight hundred, the posse property. I think a lot of that, the expansion studies were done when that development came through, which is also why they really have established this.
Any more questions, comments? Any more questions, comments, good or bad?
The main reason we, we took it out westerly was, um, like when we just did that new industrial park out there. A lot of the comments from the public were, well, the comp plan doesn't show anything, you know? So this will make it more clear that if you buy property along three sixty from here to here, you're still. In that mixed use area and it'll make it more clear that that is. Could come your way instead of, well, I thought it was gonna be that way for fifty years. Because there's nothing on there saying that we have any plans to, you know, it's all green, yeah.
Almost have to, if you've already rezoned an industrial park.
Yeah, yep. So hopefully this will help kind of. One thing that also got brought up was how wide the actual corridor is. And I don't know where we got with that, but like how wide is that actual? What do we consider the actual corridor? Um, the actual orange part, not the green? So that was one thing I think you were gonna look into or see if we.
Yeah, Todd, Todd, could you speak to just at this point on the map about how wide the industrial corridor is?
Actually, I'm actually trying to go back and check my notes to see what we had. It was, I'm pulling this off the top of my head right now. Was it five hundred feet, Brady?
It wasn't a lot.
Yeah, it wasn't a lot.
And that's something that, that's something that. The planning commission would definitely need to nail down is how far off of three sixty they want that industrial corridor to span.
Is that a total or is that each side?
Each side, each side.
I would say we wanted to expand it, especially if you wanted to put it in front of the road system. Keep the cap at all three sixty, you wanna make it a little deeper. You go maybe twelve hundred feet or something.
Twelve hundred each side. So it'd be about a, about a quarter of a mile each way.
I would think, especially if you talk about putting in service roads and stuff like that, setting all the businesses back further off three sixty.
It, it, it needs to be deeper than that. There's the service roads and bulk of businesses. You know, the, the fewer cuts you have into three sixty. If, if, or it helps everybody that travels. It helps the industries. Uh, it, and it helps the businesses. It helps all the population using the road and all the people traveling through.
We want to keep it flowing. We don't want.
It's a, and, and that's one of the goals that was in and has been in. That we've already.
And, and Brady, just so you guys know, I, I found it, it is five hundred feet. So, uh, if the group wants me to expand that, uh, we can definitely do that.
Go ahead.
All right, and so maybe, Mr. Whittington, you were saying a little even larger than a quarter mile? Are you thinking half a mile or? So, so Todd, how about maybe expand it to about a half a mile each way and let's just see what that looks like?
So, okay, what's the difference, I guess, between green and orange then in that area? Cause isn't the green going about that far?
Well, that's where, and that's where we ended our meeting the other day. The comp plan committee was then going through at the end of the meeting and really looking at the definitions of each of these. Designations and nailing those definitions down. We didn't completely wrap that up. But the green is more of your, in a mixed use development sense, is more of your. Light commercial, light slash regular commercial, and then your residential that is a little bit denser. But still is just well-inseptic, you know, because of that, it's probably on acre and a half, two acre lots, more like maple wood forest. So it's not super dense residential, so it's, but it's more subdivision type residential with. Commercial type, you know, office space and stu- stuff that's not super intense.
How deep is the industrial site on Richardson Road?
Probably, I'd say, not, not that deep, not that deep at all. I mean, it's probably only a quarter of a mile from three sixty to that subdivision there. I could measure it real quick on my app. Let me see.
Just for reference.
It probably won't be at least that much.
Just for reference, that Walmart we were talking about on sixty maybe a minute ago, from sixty to the back of their parking lot is like. Just about a third of a mile, point, point three miles.
So a quarter of a mile.
Well, uh, well, there's a lot of service roads off sixty that, that, uh. Even, uh, even the current industrial, uh, park. That, that would, yeah, that'd be over a quarter mile if we didn't count it there, would say.
Five hundred and seventy-five yards from three sixty to, uh, the. Rear property line of the Richson Road property. So that's about sixteen hundred feet.
Seventeen, sixteen, seventeen hundred.
So if you want a half mile, you'd have to pay any, I would say.
That's about a quarter of a mile.
One thing, you're gonna lose a lot of this on either side of three sixty as the railway track comes back. On the eastern part of a bay, getting access across the track is a problem. And then when you get western of a bay, it switches in, so you're not, you're not getting the whole thing, so.
Right, yeah.
Trash will take up some of it.
Discuss that too, you know? You don't want to build a subdivision across railroad. So it kind of has to sit on one side, same way the industry, probably they want to cross a river and track. So you kind of lose part of the land. Where railroad track, the side road, railroad tracks.
Well, you gotta put it in crawl, if you cross railroad tracks, they could be put in crossarms and all that stuff.
That's what I'm saying, it's just gonna have to be.
Right, nobody would do that.
Be kind of like a, where it's already had one, go down that road and finger off of it, but.
A new process is gonna be between a half a million, three quarters of a million dollars.
Yeah.
So it's gonna cost you whatever.
That's, that's one reason to see a lot of, uh, ac- access roads with businesses and so forth. Offset from railroads, but going parallel.
Yeah.
With a railroad, so that, that, uh, you know, they're still in that, uh. Part of it, but the, the roads is run parallel to.
They run to the.
I guess that's since right.
Established railroad crossing downs. Any more comments? Question? I mean, I'm sure everybody on the committee would like, like hear anything.
I know, it's like, uh. That's as far as we've gotten.
Question, Todd?
So is, uh, it sounds like my marching order is to expand the, uh, commercial industrial corridor to half mile? Is that correct?
Half, half mile on each side.
We'll see, I'd be interested to see what it does to that green.
Okay, so what I can do is, uh, how soon would you like me to get that back to you, Brady?
As soon as possible, whenever you, you can, buddy. We need to schedule another comp plan committee meeting, so it's.
It would just be like that.
Long as we get it before then.
Okay.
You'd still have some green.
I heard him say four to five, I heard you say half a mile.
Half mile on each side, I think, is what.
Yes, what I'm hearing.
That's my concern is if you do that, we have no green left anywhere in that section. Half mile is gonna take it. But you're gonna get rid of all that green.
Yes, that don't mean you're gonna put industry to the back.
Yeah.
All, all, and all of that.
Right.
It's only spots of that.
Right, but I'm just saying, is that gonna confuse the public when we put it out? That's what I'm, that we're saying, like, I think that comes into where we discuss in text maybe, but, you know. Mixed juice versus commercial industrial, how are we gonna? Cause if you put that out and it looks like it's a mile all the way down three sixty of nothing but industry. I don't know if that's gonna, I'm just saying, we gotta figure out how to maybe present it to make it more understandable.
They have to be mutually exclusive, maybe.
Well, it's gonna limit to us, what's that?
That's what I'm wondering too, is do we just?
Just all.
What's your thought, Todd?
Well.
I mean, when you come out to, into the public, public comment.
Half mile would be like that.
I mean, if you want a quarter mile, it'd be a half a mile when it hits the other edge.
It would, it would, um.
It would cut it back some.
I can kind of, I can kind of see Jennifer's concern here, uh, if you go half a mile, let's, uh. Uh, you're gonna be cutting out a lot of that mixed use development on the west side, at least as you get closer to Jetersville. Maybe share two different scenarios.
Maybe.
I could, I could give you, I could give you two different scenarios. I could give you quarter mile each side and a half mile each side, or. Uh, if, if you're concerned about one side or the other, I could.
Then what we would allow mixed use?
I think all do a nice thing like this for you.
So why are we starting to say that again?
You won't, you won't end up with industry. When do I have a mouth? Because if you're gonna miss. Half, I may want to know the difference between.
Well, yeah, I know, mixed use.
They will say, what is all?
Well, we would have explanation for all that. Yeah, there will be explanation within, it will not be.
Walmart sitting in the back and they always put the little windies and stuff up front, you know, and give them room and get it up three sixty. Like what you're trying to do and have shrubs and bumpers, keep three sixty flowing. And then railroad tracks for use for some businesses.
Yeah.
Some businesses won't railroad tracks.
Oh yeah, I'm just wondering if the people that live in that zone are gonna be like, what?
Three sixty, the other one, they say the yellow line, they're gonna be more like, oh.
Right, that's what, that's.
So it don't matter if it's off.
Okay.
If you fire yarn for a mile, they haven't laid, you're gonna be like, oh.
You live at a house right on three sixty, you needn't think especially like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, also some, uh, industries that, uh. Yeah, like or even need to have located a, an additional in, industry close to. And if they want, you know, it's, it's a separate operation, but it's, it's kind of. If they, they're symbiotic, they, they go together. And if you don't, you know, if you don't have. Half a mile, you know, that second like a Walmart loads ain't gonna build close to three sixty. They're all three.
Would, would we, would we push the green? I guess my question is.
Be back, so you ain't gonna be able to get it close to three sixty.
I mean, you have a little bit left.
But if you had a business like that came in, you had a quarter mile width. And three quarters of the property they're gonna develop is within that quarter mile, wouldn't the whole parcel fall within the same zone?
Well, we're not.
Probably.
I mean, this is just like.
First couple hundred yards will be asked on a parking lot.
Yeah, what I'm saying is that if the majority of the property they were developed was in that three sixty overlay district. I mean, we would have to zone the entire piece, even if some of it went outside of that, the whole piece had to be zoned.
Oh, yeah.
In a commercial, so it really doesn't matter.
Not worth, wanna actually be it.
Right.
Say, hey, I'd like to be a part of this county. I'd like to go here. You know?
Yeah.
And so you want business on three sixty, that's the only, like you said, it don't matter. You, you're not gonna have it on a quarter mile, but if you say half a mile, you might be scaring everybody to death. Like you're saying, you got to zone that whole tract of land.
Right.
Might be better off leaving like it is. Somebody says, hey, I wanna build a load right here, David. You gotta look at that parcel of land and see if it fits, zone the whole thing, problem solved.
Well, maybe the thing to do would be go back to the way it's written up. And say, if a portion of your property you're developing that's within this district, then the whole piece of property has to be zoned to that, that zone.
One thing we're, we might be, and I'm gonna quit talking, might be trying to micromanage it, whatever. We just have business on three sixty.
Business just look at this and say, oh yeah, this is workable.
Yeah.
Before they even come to it.
That yellow, that orange line anywhere on three sixty right there, welcome.
Yeah, it doesn't mean we're gonna allow it to be the whole thing, which I think is what we need to make sure when we put it out publicly. It doesn't mean that, it just means that those are options. It doesn't mean we're gonna prove every five feet all the way down three sixty.
But there's a difference in industry and in, uh, commercial, uh. Development, but also, uh, service, things like. Doctors, dentists. What, what, whatever in that category. And by having a, a kind of a denser hub. Close to the courthouse. Then those things would be more likely to develop later. And I think that's, that's, you know, I think that's really a division. That we, that we need to have instead of having, uh, uh, hopscotch, everything's. Uh, strung along, uh, three sixty. Uh, if, if we have that hub, then it will, it will. It will flourish and it'll attract others. The whole time I was looking at this, when I was coming to the beams in the night, too, was two instances. The Walmart on Route sixty and the Walmart on three sixty. Walmart on sixty is pretty good ways back to the back of it. And then you got, you got industry, you got asphalt, concrete. And then down here, you got your little restaurants up front, you got your Walmart, then you got apartments. But from three sixty to the back of them apartments and from sixty to the back of them asphalt plants.
It's the same.
Always.
About a half mile or more. So.
Well, what about if we just enlarge it to say a quarter mile? And then in, in the ordinance, we reworded that to say, if, if any portion of your property is in this three sixty overlay district. The entire property, whether you own three or four, five hundred acres, is still gonna be subject to that same restriction.
I'm pretty thankful for motive, which, you know, instead of hindering, um. You gotta have somebody to come first, I guess, look at their need.
That's what we did on soul projects, I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, different sizes. They told us where they wanted it and we told them kind of what we needed, what we would allow. I guess that's the same thing here, if you even went to half a mile on each side, side, that doesn't mean you're gonna have it. Everywhere, it's just, that's where we would prefer to have it.
Right.
Instead of down, you know, Mambur or.
Right, the planning commission can't choose winners or losers. And just do some of the properties on three sixty and some of the other ones in the future land use map. So this shows that, hey, if some developer comes and it's a parcel. Running three sixty or within a quarter mile or whatever you guys decide. Then you're gonna more favorably look upon it in a rezoning application. Cause the zoning isn't gonna change. Future land use map's not gonna change the zoning. They'll still have to come back and change the zoning. So you think it's not gonna hurt anything to leave it the way it is?
No, I think it needs wider.
I think being a little wider, like y'all are talking about, yeah, they, cause the public needs to know.
Yeah, that way they know, I don't wanna buy these.
And I, I sort of think what you're saying too, where just because a parcel may not be fully identified. Doesn't mean that.
Yeah.
In a rezoning, if it's part of it's identified, it won't all be rezoned. You don't, you're not gonna half, you don't half zone parcels.
No.
And we can't, we're not gonna, again, we're not gonna make it to where it's all, all the way at three sixty, it's just showing along three sixty.
That's the, that was the only reason I was suggesting that is cause if you keep it narrow, like a quarter mile. Then, then you could make that stipulation, if this property, if you buy five hundred acres out there. If it's in, part of us in this zoning district, it's subject to restrictions of that zoning.
Well, it would. It, it would be. It, it would be.
Yeah, but that could go wrong, right? I mean.
It's only if the board, the plan, the board was to actually reset it. So the future land use map doesn't change the zoning. Yep. And this is just.
I don't see why, why it wouldn't be good to have to be the half mile. And then and, and you know, if there's a, a industry that needs, and there's a track of land that needs to go deeper than that, that can be entertained. But I, I think, I think, you know, if you start out with, I mean, just three sixty itself, you're talking about, I mean, that takes up some some space. You know, so half a mile is, is not that deep for a service.
If you go too big then, like they gather once with the apartment center, looking to property down at their flashing lights, that he would've been in the industrial district. And that might not have necessarily been allowed on that piece of property.
Well, you gotta look at also, it's like over the power tank, it's just an asphalt plant up on six.
It must be.
Didn't pass any of it, but.
Hey, hey, guys.
Oh, what? Forgot you were there. He scared me.
Hi. Sorry about that. So for what it's worth, I just did some quick calculations. So if a quarter mile is one thousand three hundred twenty feet and a half mile is two thousand six hundred and forty feet, I, I don't know how much that matters in what you're discussing. I want to throw those numbers out there for you. I understand what you're saying too.
What were you saying?
Mr. Company, he was, he was saying that a lot of times you want your heavy industrial shielded by your lighter.
Yeah.
We're showing that he, that heavy industrial being.
We're kind of doing it a little backwards. Yeah.
Mm hmm. But we're trying to keep it.
Take like, I think it's orange and green.
Put some green up.
And kind of blend the color together.
We'll have the green showing and the orange through it. Does that make sense? Like here's three sixty and then you got green and then the orange is like back here. That's bad.
I think that's gonna have to be more, in my opinion, that's gonna have to be more
On the case by case.
Development side, yeah. You guys taking a zoning application.
Yep.
This is your guide. That's your, this is sort of a long-term guide.
Guide, yep.
Everything else, case by case.
I think the hardest part is gonna be figuring out how to make this make sense to citizens in a way that we get meaningful feedback. That's something we gotta work on.
There to keep our here there is you have half of three, actually a part of three sixty here and then another half of three sixty here. So probably sixty percent of three sixty on this map is in rural preservation.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, which is.
That's the biggest change.
Which is what we're trying to get away from, right?
That's the railroad going north, not.
I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah.
So just about half, forty to fifty percent.
Thank you, Travis. You see two scenarios, one a half mile, one a quarter mile, which would look like.
Yeah.
Yeah, man, I, I think the thing about is, you know, when you're talking to the public, right, we've gotta get this where they realize that this is just a plan. This is, this is where we want to target future growth. I, 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 I got your concern. If I'm sitting there looking at this map, particularly, you know, out where I live, and there's a mile-long stretch of yellow coming up through there, uh, you know, I'm gonna panic a little bit, right?
Right.
So, you know, if I was looking at it like this and take it out to a quarter mile, I don't care. But I, I think the purpose here is to say, when we're talking to the public, all we're trying to do is show where we're trying to target our future plans, right?
Their weather.
And emphasize that we're not putting it here, here. I think that's the whole point.
We're gonna, we're gonna take, you know, all of the zoning into account. It's gonna have to come before us. We're not, we're not going forward and zoning everything along here.
Cause that would be the misconception.
And that's, and that's where people are gonna panic, cause they're gonna think, oh my God, they're gonna come through.
I live right there.
You know, I've got a mile-long industrial park running right through the middle of the county. That's not what we're doing. And, and I think that's where the concern for some public.
There's my.
What Todd, what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Do you want?
I'm sorry?
Do you want uh, to do a half a, quarter mile, half a mile for us to look at?
I, I can do both scenarios easily enough and give those back to you.
Yeah, there.
Just that way we may have to just hit on it. Do a little more for green and a little bit more of the yellows.
I don't know. I just mentioned that and Brady went, he gave me the.
Yeah. Whatever y'all need.
You told me no.
We gotta do something to change, cause right now, if a guy comes in and he looks at that, it's no hope. At least by looking at this, he has hope.
He has hope. That should be on our sign. Welcome to the village of hope.
All right. On the same vein, y'all wanna schedule a meeting real quick?
Call plan meeting?
Hopefully Todd can be at our next.
Yep.
Call plan meeting.
I'll tell you what, uh, let me pull up my calendar and see what, and to let me know what you guys are, uh, looking at.
All right. What do you have available?
Industrial park and.
Okay, see, today's the twenty sixth, right?
Yeah.
I, I can tell you, this week is not good for me. Uh, next week, let me see what I got for next week, March fourth through the eighth.
Uh, Wednesday, Thursday, I'm, I'm full.
Okay. Now, I know, I've, I've got, I'm gonna have at least one AFG grant application due by next Friday. And the week of the eleventh through the fifteenth, I'm actually out at a conference most of that week. I could conceive, let's see here, I could, depending on how things are going.
What's the third week?
Yeah.
Are you available the third week?
Is that the eleventh through the fifteenth?
Yes. Uh, well, typically, the third week would be eighteen through the twenty second.
Oh, okay. So that week, the second here, I am available all day Monday, uh, Tuesday. Let's see here. Then the twentieth is not good. Uh, I've got.
Tuesday to the nineteenth.
Yeah, I can do that.
So the night, the nineteenth, I will be available.
I can't be there on the nineteenth.
So the twen, the twenty first, I'm available in the morning.
Okay, what about Thursday?
That's the other twenty first.
What about twenty first?
I'm available the morning that day.
Hey, I only missed one. No, I can't do Thursday first.
Yeah, it was an emergency, but I think.
Can't do that one either.
Hold on.
No.
That one day, I literally have nothing.
Tuesday that week.
So what, what time of day we do, we do those meetings?
Typically, we would do it in at ten AM.
Okay.
It's just what we've been doing. It doesn't.
Okay. The conference room is booked every day except Monday and Wednesday that week.
Oh, okay. Well, that week's out then.
Monday and Wednesday.
Cause he can't do Wednesday.
What about Monday or Wednesday?
The conference room is booked on Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. And in the morning. We could do afternoon those days.
Yeah, but nobody could.
What about Monday, the eighth and fifth?
Monday, the eighteenth is available.
Monday, the eighteenth.
Is available.
Ten, ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock, yep. That's avail, that's available on.
He said that was available.
I, I can, I can do the eighteenth at ten AM.
I think Roy said that a week is out for you.
I can be.
Yeah, he's out that whole week.
Okay, all right.
In Monday, Tuesday.
What about the fifth? That's pretty quick, but.
I can't.
Yeah, the fifth is out, fifth is out for me. I've got a site visit on another project that's gonna take all morning.
Okay, that's out. Um. It doesn't matter for them.
I'd have to check their schedule too. For that one.
We hadn't even got a date that works.
We could meet at the handlebill.
Yeah, but it wouldn't matter. That whole week is out for him.
I think it's a date day.
Yeah, the, the eleven through the fourteenth is out for me. Yeah, the eleven through the fourteenth is out for me, cause I'm in a conference that.
We're gonna be in April. All right, what about the week of the twenty fifth? Anybody available the week of the twenty fifth?
So as of right now, I am available the twenty fifth, the twenty sixth, the twenty seventh, the morning of the twenty eighth.
How about the twenty sixth, that works for me.
Works for me.
Let's schedule that. If anybody's there, we have to kick my schedule.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if we're not here, we're not. I think, I think I'm, I think I'm out the twenty eighth.
Fourth Tuesday.
What?
Fourth Tuesday, I'm gonna meet y'all then.
We're never gonna want to say.
I'd say, maybe we do that.
Eighteenth, maybe he was booked on the, on the Wednesday, you said?
Yeah, that one week that he was available, the eighteenth through the.
How about the twenty seventh, the next day after, suggested, is booked a little.
Does it have to be during the day?
The twenty seventh, if it is booked, we'll kick him out. Okay, I mean.
That, that'd be after the plan commission.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be after our next meeting.
I, I just think, uh, I just think we're gonna have to meet on the.
We need to meet before the next meeting.
We just have to meet without him.
We, we just have to meet on the nineteenth or one first, something like that.
Now, I'm available the nineteenth and, uh, and the twenty first, uh, the twenty first, I could do a morning meeting. Uh, the ninth.
Yeah, we, we wanna do morning meeting.
Yep, that was just, Roy was out that week.
Roy.
I, I can, I can do some rearranging. I might be over forty first.
Twenty first.
Thursday.
All right. March twenty first. All right, let's do it. Ten o'clock.
About three kids schedules.
So, so Brady, what's our location? Is it there in that room or is it?
Yeah, we're just planning the county administration building here.
Okay, okay.
All right, guys.
We can always do library or something, but.
The last item, uh, is the CIP, the Capitol Improvement Plan Committee met January thirtieth. They reviewed all the FY twenty five requests. They made a prioritization sheet. This was their initial priority, uh, prioritization document. There were sixteen projects that were requested for the FY twenty five year for a total of five point four million dollars. The committee had some questions, particularly just on a few of the school projects and was hoping to get some better quotes. County staff worked with the schools and we did get revised quotes on four of their projects. Um, and I'm gonna switch pages here. As you see the screen, this was the five point four, which was the initial request total. With those revisions, the total request went down to four point nine. So the quotes dropped about a half million dollars.
It's only five oh nine on ours.
So that's because the latest quote change came in today.
Oh, I got you.
So y'all's document was.
Oh, good. Track lighting, I personally thought though.
The elementary soccer field improvements under public, how's that under public works not under the school budget?
Um, it's, uh, it was a public works request.
It, it's not really school, it's not a school field. It's used by Parks and Rec, actually.
Is it?
Yeah. I'm not sure why it's public works, not Parks and Rec. I know, but I'm guessing it might be, is it a drainage issue? Is that why?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a change.
It's, that, that's, yeah, that's why. It's similar to the one next to me. It's a drainage issue.
No, it's damn low, the.
It's soccer field on the bottom, how they, elementary school down there.
Whoa.
Don't fight Coleman or drive.
Oh, bathroom renovation went down by a lot. Good, cause that was one of my other ones.
So
Okay.
This is the revised number. Y'all's package showed a little, little over five million.
Yeah.
But we got the bathroom renovation planning number in and that went from a hundred eighty thousand to forty two thousand five.
How did you miss it by that much?
I'm on mic, so I'm just not, but I, that was the one that floored me the most. I was like, what?
Gold handles.
Yeah, I don't. So I'm glad to see that one came.
We talked about that. I mean, it's planning.
Yeah, it's.
You know.
It, it, you could get blueprints done for that. I mean, you could get actual, and I'm assuming planning does not even mean that, right?
Yeah, this is, this is gonna be, this would encompass full design.
Oh, full, okay.
Um, spec list for the bid. This forty two five encompasses everything. It's the same firm that we worked with on the animal control building.
Well, that's good.
And, uh, the library one you see on there, it seems high, but some of that, the libraries work very are very, uh.
Efficiently.
Efficient on our meeting this time. It's the monies they have, if they didn't use something else, they would use a part of that and wait for some state funds to come in.
So, yeah, basically.
So they would split. They would split some of that, some of they preferred to start with and the other could be delayed. So that figure is a little bit.
So instead of turning back money back into the state that we didn't use, cause we didn't have a director for most of last year, that money, we would have either had to turn to the state, but the other option is to say, hey, let's put it in the CIP so that we can actually use it. So that's where that comes from. So it's not really new. It's money that already exists in the budget.
So that figure is kind of screwed a little.
Yeah.
skewed a little bit.
The fifty three is gonna pretty much be.
Paid for already.
Zero.
Yeah.
Yep. And then the two forty nine, she did say that she'd be, that she could phase it.
Yeah.
And work in, uh, a couple parts of the project that she wanted to do. So she didn't need the whole two forty nine right up this year upfront.
Is the animal shelter, um, so, so EDA is gonna put the building up and then the animal shelter is gonna, the county is gonna lease it?
No, the county. To my knowledge, the county, the EDA would have to deed property to the county.
County for it, okay. So it, it can go up before anything starts, like it's not dependent on, okay.
I was, going back to the library, I was, uh, very impressed with the, the, the detail uh, and so forth, uh, both, uh, really all of it, you know, throughout and inherited, you take the two footed. But what did wanna wanna do to, uh, get a lot more efficient use out of the space? So it's it's, it's, uh, it's not just a thing to throw on that.
No, it's not. It's very detailed.
Really substantiated through that.
So the, the two items that don't have a priority and that there's still items we haven't received further information on yet are the two HVAC replacement projects. The CIP committee didn't feel comfortable prioritizing those until further information was provided. At this time, we haven't received any further information. Supposedly, the schools have been working on meeting with a contractor uh, to get them to do exactly what they did on the other four projects to get some revised numbers, but hadn't come through.
Yeah, I remember this. We passed it on the board supervisor, except for them to decide if it's their high, medium or low. This is just what we.
Recommendation.
Recommendations for them to work with. But with your pleasure on.
Well, I'm, I was just gonna, I meant to ask about the courthouse, what, I didn't, what's that? Actual courthouse? Like existing?
That's just a renovation of the.
It's not. Fargo.
Well, no, no, no.
Renovation of the existing clerks.
No, no, the new, the courthouse renovations would be the, um.
Sorry, I was trying to look through.
Area behind, like rearranging all the stuff.
Yeah.
It has to do with the whole project.
Okay.
It's all sort of together, but it's really the area behind the, that where the jail cells are and stuff. They're gonna rearrange everything, cause right now evidently it's a big mess in terms of logistics.
Looks like it's gonna be everything from the. District courtroom all the way back to clerk's office.
Right. And the reason that number's so low is cause Darryl's planning on doing a lot of that in-house. And he's, to do that, and some, we've got a lot of projects, he's requesting an additional employee this year from the board of supervisors in his budget. So that additional employee, which would still be relatively nothing compared to what it costs to pay people, that's where he's figuring in to be able to do some of these projects.
Any more comments, some question, priority? They can be working on the budget pretty soon.
Pretty soon.
Pretty soon. Can I get a motion to pass this on as something to start with?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
There's second, motion made, second, any more discussion? All in favor making, almost saying aye. All opposed, same side, motion carries.
And then if you get more on those other two.
I'll let you know.
Jennifer, your question on that, the EDA and putting up the building, pretty confident the EDA does.
Not putting up any.
They don't put up any.
I got you. They just sublas.
I don't have any other comments. I brought up that soul project and hope to talk to them. I don't, I guess they want me to.
Tell them about great.
They fly, they won't fly. I'm not very sure what they want. I have talked to them. I have talked to them before.
They'll probably won't fly.
Tom, come on.
This, this one.
Oh, we haven't had a big crack.
Tell it's a the owner of the property is the ones putting up all the money. It's not a local company coming in.
Yeah, good to talk to who is there. That's a clatter.
So I have some questions about that.
How big is it?
Uh. Forty five acres.
Oh, that's small, okay. Sorry.
But he putting up all the money.
All on timber, what I've heard.
Forty five.
Timber around, so.
Got you.
Now, that's the last I've heard. Now, what they showed me this time, I have no idea.
I have one thing I'd like to share briefly, a good, um, that compinges a little bit on that. Uh, not since it's timber really, but, uh, this, I was handed some information uh this uh this past week, uh, last week. Uh, because, uh, uh, law bureau came and we did shot some video for a program, uh, it's a real Virginia, you've ever seen. Uh, it's gonna start on the sixteenth, I think on thirty five. It's also in a lot of places. It's on public TV and so forth too. And of course, but anyway, they talk with my son, they talk with me too, a little bit. But the 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 reason is, the the USDA just released the twenty twenty two census of agricultural debt. And so it gives the number of farms in Virginia. And they were down ten percent. Uh, this is for twenty twenty two, from twenty seventeen, number of farms were down ten percent in five years. At the average size, it went up, uh, went up, uh, four percent. The average size, a hundred eighty seven acres. And the acres of farmland went down six percent. Uh, so uh the the, uh, this is, the 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 program is on urban and suburban sprawl. So that's what it's on. So, uh, that'll be starting to be aired. You have to catch some of it before, uh, our next meeting. That's the reason I want to bring to your attention.
I don't know if anyone else, anyone else know any? Appreciate y'all coming again. We'll see you next month. Glad you're on the cop lane.